I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands in the nation.
All right, thank you. All right, so everyone's here with the exception of Courtney, who's out with notice. I don't know if everyone said she has to look at the agenda. There's many changes to the agenda since it was put in your package. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
No.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Leah. The agenda is accepted. Meeting minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. I was not at the meeting, so I can't comment on. Does anyone have comments or changes they'd like to suggest? Can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty five? Motion by Leah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. The meeting minutes are approved. And move on to. Move by Leo. Okay, so we're moving on to the consent agenda, and this is more for information. You'll see in your packets, there's administrative site plans review that Scott executed with both Chelsea Springs Two for landscaping changes, and a bush road for a pond was put in. I had talked to them about that, and I went out and looked at both of the sites with them, and we said administrative site plan review was sufficient, given the nature and the scale of the work. So, fit under the requirements that's, I would call that more for information. I don't know, Scott, any one add on that? On the administrative site.
So again, administrative site plan review is just for your information. Those projects have already been approved and under our current code, what it says is I have to notify you when I make those determinations. If you review those notification, so a consent agenda would be something that you would just vote on a consent agenda, and everything under the consent agenda gets approved through that. But if you want to pull something off the consent agenda and talk about it, you would. The reason I give you those ASPRs, which are administrative site plan reviews, are if you see something that I did, and in the future you don't want me to do that, this is the time to discuss that. You can't, we can't go back and change one of my already approved ASPRs, but what we can do is, moving forward, I'll bring the project to you instead of approving it administratively.
Same case, I looked at it and went through with them, and I was okay with moving ahead with the ASPR, so.
So, Mike.
Yep.
To answer Scott's comments, I think any wetland alterations I would like to have brought to the to the commission before just an administrative approval. Even if they're, they don't require any kind of Eagle permit. Wetlands smaller than five acres are not protected under law because that's a politician's decision. But there are valuable wetlands smaller than five acres that should be reviewed, I think, just before saying, yeah, go ahead and do whatever.
I, I think in this case, though, the pond was, well, it wasn't very big, was it, Scott? It was.
I mean, it's under five acres, but it's it's pond in a wetland. So, if the planning commission wants to look at those in the future, they should make that determination as a group. You can see what the person did. There was a wetland on his property. He dredged it and made a personal pond on his property. And if he came to planning commission, he would have to go through site plan review. But there, there are no discretionary standards for that. So it would just be you looking at if it meets the requirements of site plan review. So you wouldn't have, I don't know if there would be a way that you could deny that type of project, because all you would have to do is meet the non-discretionary standards of site plan review.
So there's no provisions for protecting wetlands from development?
Current, currently not in our code. There, it does say in our code, I think I wrote it in there, that it needs to go through planning commission, site plan review, or but again, site plan review doesn't give you the ability to deny projects that meet the non-discretionary standards. You would need to have it. We would have to write something in there that says, you know, you can, we would have to make some rules regarding the wetlands. Right now, the way the wetlands work is if Eagle approves the destruction of the wetlands, which they did in this case.
Well, they didn't have any say. They said no permit was necessary.
Right, which is them approving it because it's under their certain threshold, correct? So that's how, that's how they, that's how they deal with the wetlands.
It's them saying.
Yes.
I don't want to know.
Right. So if we wanted to then control the wetlands, we should create either a special use permit requirement, or say, you can't do this, this, or this in a wetlands and make some some non-discretionary regulations that restricts what they can do in the wetlands. So I think maybe we should talk about this in like the joint, a joint meeting and talk about creating some stricter regulations on wetland. On wetland regulations, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't think it would be valuable to bring something like this to the PC if you didn't have any
Right.
teeth to like say what they could or can, so we could, if you said to do any construction on a wetland, you need a special use permit. Special use permits have discretionary standards that say has to blend into the neighborhood, has to, you know, these like the things you saw tonight on the, on the case. So then we could look at it under those regulations, but I think we want even if you want to preserve wetlands, they should have some even more strict regulations. A lot of communities do choose to use the Eagle requirements as their triggers to wetland preservation. And we do have MC here tonight, too, that probably can talk about what other communities do with wetlands also.
Okay. Well, we don't have to talk about it now. I think you said like in a joint meeting or something.
Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, I would like to open up public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight, particularly in relation to the special use permit for the church on McKinley Road. We will open public comment for that when we're into that section. Is there anyone here that'd like to comment anything not on the agenda and tonight? Please. We need your name, address, social security number, and all that good stuff.
My name is Lori Butler. I live at one oh one Arden Lane, which is across the street from the property. Technically, my address would have been like seven twenty two McKinley if they hadn't made Arden Lane. Myself and I have some neighbors with me. We are just curious about what the site plan is going to look like. We had a big change when they tore down the house at the school and put up more lights and all the requirements about the lighting out there, because we like to look at the stars and all that stuff, but if they bring more lights on the property, that's just a concern for us. And the more use of the traffic, we're just mostly here to get more information than what we have been given so far.
And what have you been given so far?
Just that they were going to have this meeting, right? Yeah. We don't know what the, where the church is going to sit. We don't know a ten thousand square foot building's kind of big.
I'm just, from the looks of the bulletin board back there, they're going to have a presentation for us.
Yay, okay.
And their permit did talk about lighting and kelvar and light to keep it from becoming, you know, just so you can enjoy the nightlights, and we've just recently passed a new ordinance that addresses outdoor lighting, Scott.
You can also, all of that, so if you don't see it tonight, all of the information that's in the packet is up on the website, the township website, or you could give me a call at any time and come down to the office and we could go through the plans to see them.
I know we don't have much say, but it would be interesting to know what's going on. And, and you know, through the years, the light pollution has just gotten. I mean, when I first moved there, you could see everything. It was so dark, and now.
And we did just recently approve some lighting regu, dark skies lighting regulations for the township, so the proposed lighting that they are proposing, that is in tonight's plan is under that dark skies ordinance. So has to be fully shielded lighting. It has to be a certain Kelvin level and those types of things, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment before we get into the proposal for this evening? Okay, not seeing anyone, so I'm going to close public comment and move on to unfinished business. And I don't see any agendas, so I'd like to move on to new business. So, new business, the public hearing for a special use permit, SUP twenty five double oh seven, and combines preliminary and final site plan review application, CSPA twenty five dash zero zero six to allow church use on the property at seven nineteen McKinley Road. The project will include the construction of a new ten thousand square foot building to be used for the primary church services. And the existing one hundred and eighteen hundred and seventy five square foot home on the site will be converted to office space to support the church use. The improvements will also include parking spaces for a hundred and four vehicles, a four hundred and eighty square foot storage garage, a hundred and fifty foot square foot garbage enclosure and new landscaping. So with that said, I assume that there's someone here from the development of the church property that would maybe like to give us a presentation to us and your neighbors, so we can understand the scope of your plan. And I see you have a bulletin board back there. You might want to bring that forward and talk to it so we can all listen and learn.
Hi, my name is Carl Schwartz. Our church has been in Chelsea for fifty eight years. And we've had this property for thirty five years, and now's time, I'm so excited to be in front of you guys, that now's the time. We're finally going to build a church on that property about thirty five years ago, and now it's time to build out there. I brought with me tonight Kathy Kiant, our civil engineer, right? Who did all the site work, and our architect, Carl Vollmar, also from our church. And he's going to show you whatever, whatever you want to see, what you guys want to see, what you guys want to see. We've been very diligent. We met with Scott and Amanda back in May, just to tell them what's going on. I mean, we've met with the township over the years. We've had the property forever, but get to lay the land, and we met again. Three of us met with both of them, and then we met, Kathy and I met with Scott, just to make sure we're getting all our ducks in order, so tonight goes smoothly, so we don't have any surprises, and this is our last hurdle, so to speak. It's been, been quite a process and been an eye-opening process for me. All the work that goes involved in this, and we just be hoping, praying, I've been thinking about this, working towards this and praying about this for for twenty, my last twenty five years, and tonight is the yeah, we certainly got more steps to do. We're in the process of applying for grants and getting all the money put together, but this is the last big step we need to do, and we're so excited to be here tonight. So we, we're here to answer all our questions for the neighbors. Any questions you guys have, we want want everybody to be informed what we're doing. We're just building a ten thousand square foot church. We're just a typical church, nothing unusual happening out there, and we're here to answer any questions you guys have, and, and questions the public have.
Okay, no, that's good.
If you would like, if you would like now for Kathy Kiant to do the, show you the site plans or inform everybody.
Could I recommend that Kathy could bring the chart facing the audience next to the podium? That way the audience can see, we can see the chart in the screen. That way also the recording will pick up what's being shown on the chart. Yeah.
Can you move it back that way or that way? I'd still like, I don't want to look at the back of it, to be honest with you.
That's good.
I'm just going to walk you through the site plan very quickly.
Still can't see it.
You have it, you have it on your.
I know, but I'm not sure if they they, do you want to see it, Leah? No?
I mean, you can look on the screen and see.
As you're finding. Go ahead.
I'll walk you through the site plan just very quickly, and then I'm going to let Carl come up and talk to you about the building and show you his renderings for what the building's going to look like. So this is right on McKinley Street. It's on the very fringe between the city of Chelsea and Sylvan Township. To the east is actually Lima Township, and it's a piece of agricultural land. To the north is Sylvan Township, and there's a single family residence. To the south, there is the Mill Creek Consolidated Drain, also sometimes referred to as Letts Creek. And then the city of Chelsea has property south of that. This, and on the other southern part is the, the, uh, single family home that is in the city of Chelsea. And then to the west, which I think is where you are all from, there is the elementary school that's down on the southern part, and then Arden Drive is right up. And that's where there's also Sylvan Township residential use. And we're putting, proposing to put the new driveway in almost exactly the same location as the existing driveway is in. That's out there now that serves the home. So that small building to the south is an existing residence that's been there for quite some time. We're proposing to leave that and turn that into office space. And then the larger building is the ten thousand square foot building. Also, on the south side of the site, you see a lot of dark green coloring on this rendering. That's the existing woods that's there. There's a lot of vegetation in there. It's not all really great trees, but there is a lot of vegetation. We're not proposing to disturb that in any way whatsoever. And there is a small wetland down closer to the creek that we're not proposing to disturb or go near in any way whatsoever. As I said, the building is a ten thousand square foot building. We have parking on both the east and the west sides, and on the south side between what will be the office and the proposed church building. The landscaping that you see, I'm sure that the neighbors have all probably noticed that there were some trees removed along the right of way. That was, huh? Yeah, they are still there. They'll be removed. We were, we were in, directed to remove those trees by the road commission to provide adequate site distance at the driveway. So we've, what I've shown is what remains out there, what's in dark green. And then you'll see some other trees planted along that line. Those are actually going to be on private property and outside of the site distance line, so you will get some more trees back up along there to help provide some screening. And then also this area is a berm that's proposed with landscaping on top of it, and that's there to prevent like headlights from like shining into your home in the evenings. The site will be served by private onsite well and septic. And that's what's the square boxes that you see down here, kind of in the the southwest corner. We will have a well for the new building, and then the existing septic and drain field and the existing well will remain in service for the the residents that's going to be turned into office space. And then down here in this lower kind of southeast corner, north of all the tree line is where the proposed detention pond will be to manage the stormwater runoff from the site. So with that, I'll let Carl come up and talk about the building a little bit.
Or, or Carl speaks, I forgot to introduce. He's also here. I don't know if he's going to talk tonight, but he's here tonight.
Do you want me to adjust that in any, anyway? You guys see it? It's kind of hard to see that finger there. All right. So as Carl said, I'm Carl Vollmar, the architect for the project. As he said, the building is a ten thousand square foot building. It's divided into two halves. North part over here would be the sanctuary, and the southern part would be classrooms. It's entered by a covered porch on the west side or the front facing McKinley. The exterior of the building would be a split face concrete block base, and then prefinished metal siding above with a prefinished metal roof. Around the entry, we have some cultured stone and some wood accents to just set it apart, accentuate it. What you will look like? I don't know if you guys got this in your packet, the rendering?
We did not get that in the packet, so you don't want to show that to the PC members.
Is that the color that is expected to be?
Well, right now.
Okay.
That faces McKinley?
Yes, yes. Here's just the percentage. We're going to turn that into office space, and we just need to make some minor modifications to the restroom to make it ADA compliant, and then we're up and going, and the rest of it's going to remain as is, as well as the exterior of the building, so that won't change. We are going to have to regrade a little bit at the porch for barrier-free access, but other than that, it's staying the way it is, so. Any questions?
The classrooms, they all have sliding dividers.
Yeah, that's so we can open it up for fellowship hall.
So you can use it for hall activities then, too, correct?
Well, for, yeah, like a potluck, that sort of thing.
I just have a, a recommendation. It's not like a requirement or anything, because I don't think we can make this kind of requirement, but having had new home construction near my home, which is, has a lot of wooded areas, brightly colored buildings tend to stand out like a sore thumb, so I would just recommend a darker color that would, wouldn't stand out so much to the neighbors, be less offensive, just a recommendation, so.
Don't like red?
Yeah, right.
There's no red on that. That's, that's wood.
Oh, he's referring to a, a neighbor of ours.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But, no, but there's, you know, like, like white or those bright cream colors to really burst out and like a sore thumb, but anyway, that's just my comment.
First, I, for disclosure, I noticed your permit, I forget where it said that there were no commissioners near the property. On the red house on the north.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I don't know.
The, I.
Is there a conflict of interest there? I don't know.
What's that?
So Scott, just question, is, is there a conflict of interest here?
Are you adjacent to this?
Yes.
Well, that may be a conflict of interest, so.
That's a question we've asked for the last three meetings, and we were expecting this, and I've not gotten an answer on that. I'm going to go ahead and give my comments.
I'm going to.
I want to start first, what it says, that we also have been expecting this for the last thirty five years. We, we've been there for forty years ourselves, and actually kind of competed with you for the sale of it. And you guys got it. There's also two residents. I see Mrs. Gunderson is here, and she's adjacent to it also on the north side. Her property comes on the backside of it. Just a couple of comments. You do point out that there's dense woods on the north property. You guys eliminated that last year. It's no longer dense. It's wide open. And one thing I would like to see is some restoration for some of those trees there. You've got a lot of beautiful trees going in. But I'm hoping that it was great. It all got cleaned up because a lot of that stuff really needed it really bad.
Yeah, and there was some invasive species in there, too, so.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, it was, it was a mess. It's been that way for years. The other thing is you also show an existing fence. That fence has probably not been existing for eighty years. I mean, it's, all it is, it posts and occasional wire that's still pretty dangerous. And the way it's opening up right now, anybody running to there can get tangled up in it. We've had it in lawnmowers a few times. So that's just something to be addressed. And then the third thing, I'm curious what the response is to the fire department wanting to connect the east parking lot to the west parking lot for the turnaround. If there's been any thought on that yet? Because that would bring if you don't do the turnaround, you're going to do a connection, then that's going to either come further north, or you're going to shift the building to the south.
Well, this plan was the updated.
Can you turn around and show it to them so we can look at it? We're looking at a side piece here, right? What about at the top?
So no change to the top?
No.
They agree to it? But, okay.
It is a turn. And they will have to approve it, you know, if they want it longer or wider, I can touch up.
First is connecting the east and the west, and why is that?
And you do have those trees along the top of that. That's the first part I was talking about. Those don't exist anymore.
Yeah. So you'd like to see landscaping?
Personally, I would, but that's, that's also something that needs to come from commission itself. But for right now, yeah, that was at one point, you couldn't see our house coming down the road. Now we see every set of headlights that go by the school.
So why do you show that in your plan, but they're not there?
They were there last year. That was dense.
I know, but if you bring that to us, to show it to us, and those trees aren't there, but they're showing it there, for me, that's
There's a few left.
I know, but it creates a bit of a credibility issue, right? Well, we can get into, I don't think, we don't have any really specific about landscaping, do we, Scott, if I read the report correctly?
Yeah, but you can require that as a part of the special use permit requirement to blend into the existing neighborhood and not impact neighbors, so I mean, everybody was out to the site recently, and there's no veg, there's no leaves on the trees right now, so you've all seen how the site I don't, I don't know if those trees aren't there. There is a line of trees along that, that north property line. It's just this, it's almost this exact same as the line of trees that was along the east property line. But they're all very tall trees with no green vegetation, so you can just see right through, right through them, so the planning commission may wish to require landscaping. And I, I mean, I would, I would imagine you would require evergreen landscaping so that it lasts all year round and not just when the trees are green, so.
The trees, there was a lot of trees removed. There. The trees, there was a lot of trees removed. There, there.
There, there.
Earl can attest to that, because I think he was one of the ones.
But there, I mean, there are trees there. I mean, everybody has been to the site, right? Correct?
No, I've been there for forty years.
Yeah, there are trees there.
But yeah, that, that tree line changed dramatically the last twelve months.
Well, along with the front tree line.
It was a good change. I'm not complaining about the change. I'm just saying that it did open it up way more than I think most people expected.
Yeah, the prob, the problem with our, with our code is you can come in and cut down trees at any time. If these trees were cut down as a part of the site plan review, you do have a tree replacement requirement in your development standards. It's not a, it's not in your municipal code, so it's not a legal requirement. But it is a development standard, so it's something that you usually look at. And you say, alright, if you cut down blank number of trees, you have to plant blank number of trees.
Is that the case here? Because this is the first we're seeing this. That was an activity that was going on.
There, there are no trees proposed to be cut down after, as the site plan approval is getting approved.
But they're showing trees on the site plan that are existing that aren't there.
I mean, again, I would have to verify that. There is a line of trees. I mean, if you look at their, what they're showing on the site plan.
On the site plan, it says there's a dense line of trees. That doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, I mean, there is a line of trees along the north property line. I mean, yeah, I, they could have cut them all down without, before they came to us.
That's fine, just say it then, right?
Yeah, but you can require what, like I'm telling you, you can require, you can require them to plant two thousand trees if you want. If you believe that that's going to make it meet one of the special use permit requirements.
You know, you have a berm to prevent the headlights to shine on Arden Lane and our new neighbors there on the corner. I'm not sure if they're here tonight.
Well, I, again, I'm just telling you what is allowed by the code. So, again, if you want more landscaping, you can require them to plant more landscaping.
Yeah, that's, that's a committee, commission.
No, I'm, that's what I mean, the planning commission. I don't, I don't, I. We will have to vote if you have a conflict of interest or not on this case. Because the way your bylaws in your plan, planning commission requirements are. It's forecasting a vote on a matter on which a planning commission member may reasonably be considered to have a conflict of interest. The member must disclose the potential conflict of interest to the planning commission. The member is disqualified from voting on the matter if the conflict of interest exists. Or if a majority vote of the remaining planning commission members conclude that a conflict exists. So failure for the member to disclose the potential conflict of interest as required under these bylaws in Michigan law constitutes malfeasance in office. For purpose of these bylaws, a planning commission member has a conflict of interest. If the member has a financial interest in the outcome of the matter before, before the members. Or if the Michigan law otherwise requires the member to recuse himself. So the people in this.
This has been discussed at least three meetings this year. And this, this one particular project is the reason I was asked to join this commission. Because I was in here a year ago wanting to know what's going on with that property and nobody knew that. And I have disclosed it and you recall, you weren't here at the last meeting, but you guys remember last?
This is, this is when we actually have to make a vote on it though. So the planning commissioners that are up there.
I used to get a little heads up on that before I stuck my foot in my mouth.
Well, I don't know. This is all part of the dialogue, so I wouldn't look at it that way. No, don't look at it that way.
Well, I, I've been asking this question for.
I haven't heard you ask this question, I'm sorry. So, I mean.
So the key question.
It's in the planning commission bylaws.
No, this is a key question, is does he have a financial interest, correct?
Right, and you guys will make the determination.
Yeah, well, that, I don't see that. I mean, we're just.
Only, I could say, only financial interest I see does it impact the value of your house. That's, that would be the only financial interest I could see. I don't know if it's significant enough to have a.
I think just by the project alone, becoming a church instead of a piece of property that gets divided into forty eight parcels, which was one, the discussion was a year ago.
Yeah.
For rezoning future plans, that was something that the, that's the reason that we came in the first time. But yeah, I, I'm not, this is not about any kind of financial gain.
No, I, I don't think so. I.
We've been back and forth for years about the idea of a church being built there and we're happy with the plan. My wife is gonna be here tonight and she's, I went through the plans with her. And she didn't even want me to mention the trees. She said, I like it. That's, that's great. It's, it's good to see something finally gonna happen to it. That's going to improve it. So that's where we're at from a residential standpoint. From a commission standpoint, I'm just trying to do my part.
Alright, um, did you guys, was there any more presentation materials? Did you want to speak? No, okay. Yeah, if could you, I'd think that would be useful.
Do you want us to present the report? Go through all of the stuff?
Uh, just a high level, just synopsis, summary, any of the key risk areas we need to focus in on.
Yeah, good evening. My name is MC Moritz. I'm an engineer with OHM Advisors. The township as well. My role is to review site plans per engineering standards that Sylvan Township has. And then just general engineering standards for southeast Michigan, for Michigan and for this, this country. So the national standards that would be applicable. There was not much to comment on, on this review. I think I only had five engineering comments. The first two are really just housekeeping, so that the final construction plans are, are complete. It's like updating the, the sheet index that lists all the sheets and having the benchmarks for the survey. Under stormwater management, I had a couple quite minor comments. One is regarding their runoff calculations. There is a slight discrepancy that would change the volume of the basin by less than two hundred and fifty cubic feet. Which in this context, it would hardly, you wouldn't even be able to notice it on a site plan review. But just to be thorough, I noted that in a comment for them to address. And then the other storm comment was on their outlet control structure, which is like the drain on the bathtub. Basically, it's where the water eventually exits the detention pond. Standards just ask that there's an anti-seep collar around that outlet pipe. It's a really minor detail and it's just something that helps keep the water exactly where we want it to be and not bleed around that pipe. And the last comment on here, I think we've already addressed, it was about providing a turning template for refuse removal vehicles. Just to make sure a dumpster can get in and out of this site. They did provide a turning template for the, for a fire truck and for emergency response vehicles. I will always defer to the fire department to sign off on that, because I, I don't know how to drive one of those things. I try to trust them. And as, as Kathy said, they've proposed this, this sort of hammerhead turnaround on the southern end of the parking lot. Lieutenant Stanley hasn't signed off on that yet. He probably will. Worst case scenario, he might ask to see that hammerhead at the top on the north end.
I have talked to him. He wants it on the top.
Just so that they can drive forward into it, I would imagine. Which, again, if I was driving, I don't blame him. It probably helped me too. But I still recommended site plan approval for this, because those kind of tweaks and changes won't impact the overall geometry of the site. And if you folks have any, any questions or about any of the other materials that were provided.
No, I just thought it'd be good to hear a synopsis. So from your perspective, there's nothing of.
Yeah, no, no big concerns. And then at the very end, I noted the permits that we would want to see before doing, you know, final construction approval. So the county health department's got to sign off on septic, on the well, road commission for the right way.
Yes, information that's in Scott's report, so.
Yep, yep, yep.
No, we've got all that.
Alright, excellent. That's all I've got. Thanks.
So I have some questions I'd like to ask. Who, who could speak for the church entity? So in your proposal, you talk about recreation events. Can you tell me what these recreation events are that may or may not occur on this property?
Well, what we put in there. I didn't want a recreation event. I don't know what we're gonna do in that regard. Nothing's planned right now. I'm taking it day by day and we get out there, but we do have, you know, property out there. We might play softball out there, volleyball, you know, any type of events with the kids we can do out there.
What is your congregation? What kind of recreation events do you currently have?
Just kids, youth group games. They play outside when it's nice out.
No outdoor activities at night lit up?
No, 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 not, not, nothing in that regard. No, we just want to have a.
Okay.
Category. We have nothing.
Would you consider outside parish festivals a recreation event?
Outside what?
Like a parish festival, where you bring in outside vendors and you have cooking and maybe fundraising activities, things of that nature? Would you consider that to be a recreation event?
I guess, I give, you could argue that, I guess. I, I don't, I think a recreation to me is. Sports and doing stuff physically out there, but. We, we have never done anything big as like you're describing and there's no place to do that, but.
You probably never had a place big enough to do it though.
We, we do have, we do have ten acres out there, yeah. But nothing, nothing has been talked about or planned or anything like that.
Okay.
We're finally, finally, finally gonna build a church out there after having it for thirty five years. We've.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, because I talked about it. I wanted to understand.
Pierce like school building for the last few years.
Okay.
Had room to do stuff like that.
Yeah, and we've been in the schools for actually thirteen years now, beach school for four years and Pierce for nine years, so.
Okay. And have you, have you used the facilities at the school for any events in that, your current location?
We had a, our fiftieth anniversary of the church, we had a picnic outside.
Okay.
At Pierce, so we, you know, we had.
If you're not running youth soccer leagues and.
No, no, we do not have any, not anything on a regular basis, no.
Okay. Because the, the intent here was just trying to understand if this is gonna turn into a church rec league property on all your actual space? Where you're gonna be bringing a lot of people in on weekends and different types of traffic flows and things of that nature. So that's not in the scope of what your current vision is, correct?
That's not in the current vision, correct, yes.
Okay. Are you gonna be running a child, any sort of childcare in this facility, given your proximity to the school in an after daycare setting?
No plans to do that. Never thought about that. No plans to do that and.
Yeah, just, because we had a company come in a few years ago that, given your proximity to North Creek, I could see a potential demand coming in for that. So if you think you're gonna do something like that, now's the time to talk about it.
Yeah, no, I have not thought about that ever. I, I.
Okay.
So it's hard enough to run a church.
Yep. No, that's fine. Do you anticipate any sort of hall rental activities?
Are me?
Do you anticipate any sort of hall rental activities?
As far as us running out our, do I anticipate that? No.
No, because if you do, then you, you become more commercial, right? Then you'll need to come back for additional special uses, right?
Our plan is to tell people about Jesus Christ and how to have relationship.
No, I understand that, but. But I've, I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone else, you know, particularly the surrounding neighbors. If, hey, you know, one of the ways you're gonna raise money to support your church is that we're gonna rent this out on weekends, right? And you're gonna turn into a media event center, right?
No, no plans to do that.
Okay. Then from a funding perspective, how far along are you in raising the funding for your church? And the reason I'm asking is that we have timelines, right, for permits and approvals and all those other scenarios. And what we don't want to do is see a half-built facility out there, right?
No, we're not, we're not gonna start anything till we're ready to build it. But the, the, the plan is come March first, that's the, 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 the. Date I've told the grant requests and stuff, that's what we're gonna do. And whenever we can't have in hand, we're gonna borrow that money. So we're gonna, we're gonna, takes a lot of faith, but we're gonna build it and finish it. Hopefully within, within the year, you know, within.
So you're fully funded?
No, I wouldn't say we're full, I wouldn't say we're fully funded, no. We've had, no, no, but we.
So my question, go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, what I don't want to see is a half-empty building out there, right? And so my question is, do we need to see bonding on this project? This is my question.
We need to see what?
Bonding for completion.
Okay. I never know, never heard that request before.
You know, a lot of times you'll see a project where a developer, people come in and they'll build a project. And one of the things is you worry about them being, have the financial resources to complete what they start. And what we don't want to see is a half-finished building, right?
The bank is not gonna give us money if they don't see that we have the money to build it. So I think that, that's gonna be your effect of your plan is gonna be, the bank will not give us a loan if they don't believe after they have their appraiser come out and do the whole project and believe it can't be finished, they're not gonna give us money anyway. So I think that's gonna, in fact, that's gonna take care of your, your fear about the bonding. We won't be able to get, and we're gonna have to get a bank loan. I've been talking to two banks and we've gone through all our paperwork and that's all, all out there.
Yeah, I, there is, we do on our pre-construction meetings with OHM. They do require bonding for certain items, but not for the, I don't think for the building. Can you address that, MC?
I have something on hand.
Right.
We would typically bond for any public utilities, which the site doesn't have any water. The storm is also private, so none of that would be bonded either. And typically, what would be left under the site engineering to make sure that it got done, what was left halfway. Would just be the, it would include. So it would, there would be a bond that typically at fifty percent, the township has discretion to adjust that amount. A bond for fifty percent of the, of three for that site cost.
But it doesn't, it doesn't cover what, if the half-finished building or anything of that nature? Right.
I think they require not.
I don't think so. I've never heard of anything like that, because, I mean, if I build a new single-family house, nobody requires me to bond that I finish my house either. They do for improvements in the, for the roadway, but this wouldn't. Include any of that. I'm not, I mean, it seems like an odd request. We just, we don't usually require people to bond for the buildings. Like the tow yard just recently came through and this didn't come up and part of the tow yard. What I was imagining you were concerned about the timeframe was, is that he won't get his funding within a hundred and eighty days and then the approval will expire.
That's one part.
Because a hundred and eighty days is six, six months.
Yeah, but the more.
Like, it's pretty hard to get funding nowadays in six months. We seem to, every project we have comes back and gets an extension. Under our code, you are allowed to increase the expiration date.
No, I understand it, but when I hear them talk about they need funding, right, or grant money, that tells me there's not a financial plan in place to finish the project. So that's, that's the reason that the question came up.
You know, they probably won't start it, is my guess, if they, if they can't get funding.
And we got, billing a ten thousand square foot billing is a big task. We have a lot of money, but we're still working to get more money making. But we're still working to get more money. We can, I think we can get the rest from the bank. So it's, it's gonna happen.
So you're not gonna.
I would like to get less from the bank and not make that mortgage some big hanging over our heads for all these years. So I'm, I'm not, we're gonna have the money to pull it off. But are we gonna be able to bill it with cash? No.
No, I, I just, it's a matter of getting it up and getting it finished and not a half-finished building sitting there, right? That's.
We're, no, that.
That's the.
We're gonna have it all, all that's gonna be done. It's just the amount that we have to borrow might be bigger than we want to borrow.
Yeah, it's, my wife tells me too.
It's, it's gonna, but there's not, there's not a, it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. We have everything pretty well lined up. Like I said, I got two banks. We haven't finalized it. Well, I want them first be done tonight. I can't tell people, I want to take a mortgage out when technically I can't even build now until I get approval from you guys.
Let me, another question I got. Do you envision, um, when do you have to be out of your Pierce Lake?
March first.
And where do you plan to congregate after March first?
Okay, that's a great question. That, I've got options. Do you wanna hear them?
Well, well, my concern is, are you planning on putting like temporary tents up?
No, no.
Location and.
No, 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 no. I got options. I.
Okay.
They're not, I gotta drive a ways. I gotta take everybody a ways away to go to it, but I got options.
Okay. So from a timeline for approvals, do you need, it's five hundred and forty-five days, I believe.
A hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days from permit, but the, I think it's five hundred and forty-five days from the approval process? If I read it right. There's a lot of rules I can't remember all.
The applicant does not, alright, the applicant does not secure a building permit within a hundred and eighty days.
And finish in five forty-five.
So, and it says the applicant does not start construction on the property or show evidence of completion of construction per the approved site plan in five hundred and forty-five days.
So do you need more time?
No, 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 no.
So a hundred and eighty days is six months. You imagine yourself starting or pulling your building permit within the next six months.
My.
I'm offering to give you more time.
I don't, I don't think we need more time.
Okay, well.
I don't think we need more time. Am I wrong, Kathy? Alright, well, and my people are telling me get more time, give me more time.
We are looking to change this to a year in the next zoning text amendment that I'm, that I'm working on right now, so. You might just wanna increase that.
I guess we wanna increase it then.
Three hundred and sixty-four days? I'm okay giving them more time. I think it's. Okay. I'm trying to think. So you'll have no temporaries, no childcare, you're not gonna do hall rentals? No temporary shelters onsite for, during the construction process, other than well, those that are reasonable for construction, like protective materials, things of that nature. Those were my questions. Doug, your turn.
Okay, um, on that southwest leg of the property where it's all woods there, uh, what's the length of that down from that elbow down to the creek? Do you know how many feet that is? Yeah. I couldn't read it on my printout, but. It's just under four hundred feet up, just halfway up. Okay. I know you said that you don't have any plans right now to, to alter the woods on that southern section there. But I'm wondering if the commission, kind of to dovetail on Chris's request to have, um, some trees restored on the north end to protect the, the, um, Letts Creek with a fifty-foot buffer of, uh, deep-rooted plants, so that in the future, you know, if you decide to, you know, develop that part of the property, that at least there's still that buffer there that can be, uh, maybe fifty feet of buffer down to the creek. Right.
But there's wetlands in there.
Twenty-five foot buffer already. It's on the.
Yeah, on the drawings.
A twenty-five foot buffer.
Wetland buffer on the creek.
Okay, so that is in the plans, the buffer?
It's awful wet there.
Planting more plant material would be more disruptive.
All right, yeah. It's, the grasses and deep-rooted, whatever's there. Okay.
And once there is a site plan on this property, if they do cut down trees in the future, they would have to come to us and ask because that we use that vegetation as screening to approve the project.
Okay, cause I, I saw that there's the, the eagle mentioned the flood plain, the hundred-year flood plain that goes out a certain amount, but um, so that buffer protects that whole plain.
Yeah, there's also a wetlands down there, um, that's for the, the flood plain, uh, on that creek is is not as far as the wetlands on that creek.
That wetlands isn't more than five acres, is it? I mean, it's not.
Well, they're not developing it, so I, I mean, the entire wetlands is much larger than five acres cause it goes along the entire Letts Creek.
Oh, I see.
But the portion on this property is less than five acres.
Yeah, but if it's all part of a contiguous wetland.
Yeah, it's part of a larger contiguous wetland area.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Alright.
Other questions, Doug?
Um, no, I think that was it.
But again, to reiterate, like if they took, like, let's say they build this building and then they start and then they cut down all the trees along the street. They can't do that. We've used those trees as the reason that we approved this site plan. So if they wanted to do that, they would have to come to us. We would, you know, let's, we would listen to their reasoning for wanting to cut down those trees and then we would probably do a administrative site plan review, um, approval, which has some mitigation measures for them to replant. If, let's say the trees have some sort of disease or something, then they would have to replant the appropriate number of replacement trees. No, all of the existing trees on the site. They are required to remain as part, if they come down, if you are required to remove those in the future, you will have to replace those once a site plan, a commercial site plan. Yep. Yes. You would have to mitigate for those, yes, because they're part of your site plan review. Because we're using, if, if we're gonna imagine that they're gone, we're gonna want trees there.
Matt, your thoughts?
I'm fine with it.
Chris, what about you? Any else you want? Other questions out there? Anyone else in the public? Have any of the neighbors have any questions or comments? Are you going to a closed session?
Sure.
Dirt road?
No. That's, that's a, uh, road commission. It's a public roadway, so prior to them starting construction, they have to get a permit from the road commission, but I don't believe the, I, I don't know, does the road commission go out and if somebody damaged the road, will they make them repave it? Yeah.
The county, the county part of it though, doesn't start until I think the parking lot there just south of. Right. The rest of it is the city.
No, the city told us all, all county. That's one of the reasons they wouldn't let us in it too, because the city did not wanna take over the stuff.
And they're not getting any taxes.
The culvert down by the creek, up by the school. Cause they've got a severe flooding problem, uh, in your yard. The lake there every spring, uh, it's because of that culvert.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll still back up, not as bad as it was.
Yeah.
But it's on your side of the road too. What starts on your side of the road goes across Diane.
When it, when it ends up in my yard, then it's gotten really bad. So it come back and up from over there, but I thought the city went up to where that sign is, that word says, welcome to Chelsea.
City and the county catching the road right up, I mean, they, they cross over each other, so technically the road starts, I don't know, we have a couple of road.
I mean, it would, like, like, I think the wording that, it would have to be an egregious damage of a road, of a public road. So let's say they damaged a road that was in the city with, before they got to the site. Um, again, the word would be egregiously, so not just drove construction traffic over it and made it worse than it already is. They, they probably would have had to drop something on it or do something that damaged it severely before the city would come out there with their big magnifying glass and do their, do their investigation on who, who damaged the roadway, um, and who we're going to try to get into a court case with to fix this roadway. Um, so there are things in place to, to mitigate these things, but, um.
I think the question is that there's probably less than fifty feet of road that belongs to the county that construction traffic would actually be using. They're gonna be coming up through the city. They're not coming from water of the road.
The same, the, the city would do the same thing if, if they damaged the road more egregiously, the city would go after them instead of the county. It would just be a different entity that would go after the developer. I don't see this development having that type of problem, but if they did, um.
Yeah, we should have the cement truck driving one of the frost laws are probably on.
Yeah.
Problem.
But this really isn't heavy development. There's not gonna be a lot of heavy equipment coming in.
The site is pretty flat, so, already, so they, they don't have as much grading as many of our projects that we see go on. So, and again, they are all public roads. If we had more control over our roadways, um, in the state of Michigan, I'm sure we would have more um, mitigation measures that we'd put in place, because I have worked in areas where we control the roadways. And usually, um, there are standard conditions of approval that go on to um, all projects that basically say if you damage the roadway and it, you know, when we go out and do the final inspection, you gotta check the public roadway and all of this stuff. Um, but because the entities that control the roadways in Michigan aren't the same entities that are approving the projects, it's a little bit different.
Well, hard to tell what's done and what wasn't done. If it was brand new, you could
Yeah.
Figure it out probably a lot better, but being in such a rough shape, it's gonna be awful hard to track down the cause of it.
Maybe the portion of the city is.
Just in over twenty years, twenty-five years at least since the last time they did it. So it's, it's due and I've had a few people asking me about it since I've got some ties into the county road commission, other work we do, I do. And, but I don't know. It's not sure who's responsible for it. I live on it.
Did you want, um, to inform the citizens about the lighting that they're proposing?
Yes, I would like to have that.
So, um, they did submit a, a photometric, um, plan with their, with their plans that meets all of our, um, lighting requirements. Um, and when you go to the website, it's the plan that looks like that. It has a whole bunch of little numbers all over it and that, that, those numbers, you'll be able to track where the light will cast. Um, but what they're proposing are eight, um, light poles and five, um, mounted light, uh, wall-mounted lights on the building itself. So there's eight twenty-foot tall light poles. They're, um, fully shielded, so that means the light is directed towards the ground. Um, that's not, uh, they're fully shielded. The wall lights that they proposed aren't fully shielded and, uh, there is a condition of approval that says that they would use a approved, um, wall pack. It's just a name for a type of light that you put on a wall. So right now they have a, a wall pack that has a, um, shield that disperses the light out. Um, they need a shield that disperses the light down towards the ground. So, um, the other thing, um, that is required is that the light temperature be, uh, three thousand Kelvin or lower. Um, which is, it's the, for regular people that don't know, it's the orange or light. It's not the white light, so, um, it's, it doesn't cast as far either. Um, it's a, it's a yeah, it's a warmer light. So, so it's not this color light. It's more like the color light that's out in the hall. So it's the, like when you buy li, lights at, at a Lowe's, they usually come in two different colors. That's what those three thousand Kelvin lights are. Also, all outdoor light fixtures existing or here hereafter installed and maintained shall be turned off between eleven P M. and sunrise, except when used for commercial industrial uses such as sales, assembly, repair, where such use is open for business after eleven. But only so long as such use is open for business. So it requires that the lights be turned off at night. Um, yeah, so, um, it does, does have an exemption to allow, uh, lighting for security purposes on motion, um, sensors. So, yeah. So I'm sure they'll probably, one of their wall packs that are above the doors, they'll have on some sort of motion sensor, so. Uh, that's required under the code. That's not typical. It's the code requirement, so.
Nor school doesn't fall under this, so that light, we're saying. We're gonna still have that. That lights up all the way down to my house.
I have an odd question. For your septic system, are they gonna require you guys to have an engineered field?
She knows.
Um, yeah, we don't really get soil, we have a good chance of, we will have a pump system to dose the field, so it will be an engine field. And we will have to remove like the first three to four feet because it was fine and we have. because it was fine and we have to stand here. You're gonna have a large smell, like neighbors down the road and all, you know, we're not in a mound because we found good things. So we're just gonna let it, didn't play a, that's what the grade is right now in the sand. And then.
Why do we have to pump it then?
We have to pump it just because of the grading.
Yeah.
So I already fixed the building up slightly. It's really flat. So it would be impossible for me to get gravity feed from here to here when these are almost the same elevation. And I have to be, you know, I think it's feet below the cloud of the basin. So yeah, I have to bring it down to here and pump it up.
The location where you found the good soil.
The, the whole site is almost the same elevation.
Yeah.
So no matter where I move that field, I ended up with that kind of situation.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I can address that. They have a 17.875 square foot monument sign that's five foot nine inches high. It has no lighting on it.
It appeared to be about the same size as in our schools. Their sign that they've got up front, just not quite six feet off the ground and no lights on it.
Should we have a light?
I think the code does allow you to have a light on it actually. So, but I would have to check with our residential code requirements. Did, would you like, I, I thought you would like a light on it. Let's see where that sign is in here.
They can do that after the fact, right? If they want.
Yeah, they could do that after the fact, as long as it's allowed in the residential zoning district on these types of buildings. Which you followed the size regulation. So you must have read that section because it does allow 18 square feet sign. And you were at 17.875. So. I was like, oh, there, it's a pretty small sign. Other things, I mean, I went through in my staff report and you know, the thing, it met all of the general regulations and I just pointed them all out to you, like the bulk regulations was first in my staff report. That's setbacks, height, floor area ratio, square footage. It met the parking. They actually are parking 104 parking spaces. They're only required to have 94. They're actually only required to have 84 because a use like this, the planning commission can waive the shared uses. So they're, they're, they have 66 parking space requirement for the sanctuary, nine parking for the classrooms and 10 parking, uh, for the, 10 parking for the other classrooms and nine parking for the office. So you could have even less than 94 spaces under our code. So they do have 104. So they don't have to have that many if for some reason, when they're doing their fire turnaround, they need to use some of the parking that they're proposing. They could use those parking spaces. The, we already talked about the lighting propose, proposal that they had. I did have a condition of approval in my original staff report that talked about the parking requirements and it not meeting the 200 square feet. We do have development standards also. The development standards that we have allow parking spaces that abut landscaping or abut sidewalks to extend two feet over into those areas. And that's because when your tire hits, it can, your front of your car is two feet out. So they, they proposed all of their spaces at 18 by 10 that are either abutting a landscape area or a parking. So that all does meet our code requirements. The sign thing, it meets all of our current regulations. Landscaping, their landscape plan meets our regulations, our requirements. Now, under the discretionary requirements, you can require more landscaping to provide additional screening so that the project doesn't impact the neighbors, blends into the neighborhood, those types of things. The outdoor trash enclosure met our requirements and that's on page six. It just goes through and tells you what all of the requirements are and how it meets all of those. And then it goes into the special use permit requirements. And there are, there are seven discretionary standards that you'll be asked to review the project based on those seven standards. I wrote a small comments under each one from staff. But also I did have the standard condition of approval under them also, which is that all required federal, state, local reviews and approvals will be required for this project prior to issuance of a building permit included, but not limited to Washington County Road Commission, Washington County Environmental Health Township Engineering Consultant Chelsea Fire, Area Fire Authority and Chelsea Area Construction Authority. So that's just a standard condition of approval that we put on all of these. And that's so that we know that when they get their building permit, they have a, all of their state and federal approvals also in hand. The propose, so, and then, and then there is the site plan review requirements, which they had submitted a bunch of information that's in your packet. That's why your packet was 136 pages long. Because you received all of the information that the applicants submitted, which included like, MC said, a wetland report. It included the soils evaluation stuff from Washington County Public Health Department. It included the traffic information for the left-hand turn lane. All of that stuff is interesting if you look through it because you get to see what the traffic numbers actually would be on, on these types of things. And, but it's also 136 pages. So a lot of it's not that important for what we're looking at tonight. But that was all included in the application materials. And then my staff report basically goes through what we require as application materials and then points you to where each of those requirements are found on their plans. So, and then there's the site plan review standards, because this is a combined site plan review, both the preliminary and final site plan review standards are listed in the report with again, a comment from staff on, on the rig requirements. Again, as you see through, when you look through my comments, I have very little suggested conditions of approval for you tonight. And I didn't find anything outstanding that the project would be in violation of. That's not to say that, again, these are discretionary standards that the planning commission can't have a different determination than what I have.
All right.
Thank you, Scott. And then at the end of my report, I added some example motions. There's an example approval and an example denial motion. And then after that, it tells you what the effect of the approval is. I think it would be a good suggestion that we extend the, if you do approve the project tonight, to have it extend the expiration to at least a year. So that we're not back here in six months doing an extension.
Okay, thanks Scott. Anything else you want to add?
I have a question for Scott, if that's all right.
I'm gonna close public comment, but you can still ask Scott. So, so public comment, is there any other public comment that people would like to talk about before I close? Okay, so I'm gonna close public comment and this is for our internal conversation. Go ahead, Doug. You wanna ask Scott some more questions?
Well, on, on page 11 of, it's part of the final site plan review. Number eight mentions deed restrictions, if any. So what would be an example of a deed restriction?
If this property were sold to them with some sort of restriction that they couldn't build a church on it or couldn't, I mean, they would have to disclose that to us. Since they didn't disclose that to us, we imagine that, that that's not there. If they build this and that deed restriction is found to be out there, which I'm guessing it's not, but if it is, they are in violation of their, their approval because that was not presented to us.
Okay.
But there could be deed restrictions for any, I mean.
Yeah.
A person that sells their property can put any kind of deed restriction they want on it when they sell it.
Cause you had said none provided. I just assumed that, yeah, there wasn't any restriction, but I get a good idea what, you know.
Okay. So I think I'd like to review the special use permit standards first and then we can go into the site plan. So first one is the proposed SUP will be harmonious, harmonious. In accordance with the objectives, intents and purposes, regulations of the chapter, it is, it's harmonious that favors granting the SUP. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read this, but I'm not gonna go to it in very detail. But section 30 states that the person, the AG district is to conserve, stabilize, enhance and develop farming, related resources, utilization activities, et cetera. Churches are allowed in the AG district. So I'm in favor of that. This meets the standard.
So how does it enhance or develop farming?
Well, but farming or churches are allowed in AG districts. My rationale behind it, Doug.
Okay.
Proposed SUP will be compatible with the natural environment and existing future land use, uses in the vicinity. If it's compatible, that favors granting the SUP. I mean, if I look at, there's a North Greece got a school over there already. So you've already got some larger buildings in the area. It's what I'll call seasonal traffic flows. It's not something that's in and out every day, you know, so it's not, it kind of fits the operation of a school and a church. They, given their proximity, it's, to me, it's a, it's a compatible use in the, in the neighborhood. You guys, is everyone else agree with that one? So I think it meets condition number two.
Yes.
Yeah. The proposed SUP will be compatible with a comprehensive plan. If it's compatible, that favors granting the SUP. This is, we're talking about the, this is really about the open space and some of the other areas. Yeah, they are maintaining quite a bit of open space here versus having, you know, like Chris pointed out, you know, a number of houses. So it does help maintain a rural atmosphere. I, I think it meets those conditions for point number three. You wanna agree with that? Okay. Keep track of all my paper here. Condition number four. The proposed SUP will be served adequately by essential public facilities, services, highway, streets, police, fire protection, grand ways, structures, refuse, disposal, or the persons or agency responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately, adequately any such services. If it'll be adequately served, that favors granting the special use permit. I think that's fairly been well established that there shouldn't be any risk there. So we, condition number four is met. Number five, the proposed SUP would not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighbor's uses, persons, property, or public welfare. If it's not detrimental, that favors granting the special use permit. I don't, I didn't see anything that was detrimental to the neighbors based on what I've heard. Of course, being a neighbor, I guess he would tell us if it was. So I think point number five is approved. Number six, the proposed special use SUP will not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. It will not create additional requirements that favors granting the SUP. I don't see any demand on social services. Fires, we're already paying for it. We don't have police. So hopefully we don't need police and a church. So, but. I can't what, so. I think number six, we're in the favors. Everyone in agreement with that? Number seven, the proposed special use must comply with all other applicable chapters in state and federal statutes, regulations, and laws that complies and that favors granting the special use permit SUP. I see nothing here that. Cause an issue. So we need, so Scott, a question for you. So landscaping, we can talk about in the site plan review.
You can do it on here. The, the one, I think number five, when, I mean, if you would like additional landscaping, I'm like, the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturb the existing or future neighbor uses, persons, property, or public welfare.
You know, I wasn't sure if we should talk about this in the.
I would talk about it here because this is where you have more discretion.
Okay. No, that's just what, so there's landscaping we could talk about. I'd also like to introduce commercial hall rental. I don't think that's like a use that we want to see out there in the future. It's not so much for the churches. Cause this special use goes with the property forever.
Yeah. And it's, and it's not proposed, but it's good to point it out so that they're not back in here in the future asking to do it. So, because what is pointed out is the only thing that we are approving tonight. And that's the information that was provided on the special use permit application.
Right.
Um, that's this four paragraph or five paragraph. It all.
And so maybe the, the way to phrase that will be the facility is, is intended for non-commercial purpose, purposes. I guess that's.
I think no event rental is.
Pardon?
No, no event rental is clear. I mean, no commercial event rental or.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think what's, what's the right way to, we, we still want to turn into a commercial rental hall right down the road.
Daycare.
Or what?
Daycare.
Or daycare, yeah.
So you can add those in as conditions. Obviously they're not proposed. What it would do is it would, if they wanted to do those, just like if they wanted to do anything that was not on the proposed list, they'd have to come back to you. It would be hot. You're telling them, don't come back to us if it's these six people that are sitting up here tonight. Cause we've already said, don't do it. But if there's a different seven, you know, people, maybe they still come back and ask for that condition to be removed. They have, they can do that. But you are pointing it out. I like that you're pointing it out because it makes it easy for the planner in the future to know what you did or did not want out there.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know. What, what do you think, Chris? Are like hall rentals and you think?
That, that would be a problem, I think, in the neighborhood. I mean, when you think about hall rental and the, the church is operating as a church is one thing.
Right.
But Saturday evening parties.
Right.
Wedding receptions and stuff that could get out of hand. Something that we wouldn't want to see.
Lou, your thoughts on it?
Well, if they have weddings there, they might want to have a reception in the church. So how do you handle that?
Part of the church is hosting the wedding versus running it out just to anybody that needs a reception hall? Yes, two different things just developed.
But it's commercial rental, right? I mean, I think it's one thing if it's a parishioner. It's different. You're renting it out, you know, like a KSC hall, for instance, right? For different parties and things of that nature.
This, this building's a single level, right? There's no basement to it, right? This, this building's a single level, right? There's no basement to it, right? So there's no place for a reception. It's either the sanctuary or classrooms.
Well, those classrooms, the walls all collapse, so you can set it up.
Oh.
You can set it up as, I put a band in there and
I think no commercial rental of the space on the property is, is clear enough that we would know if there, if we get violations, you know, we'd have to make sure that, that it's a commercial rental. I, you know, we'd go out there and ask you to provide us with the information that it's not a commercial rental of the space, and then, uh, no daycare is, you know, clear.
I'm not necessarily opposed to the daycare in the sense that there's probably a demand for it, but.
They haven't proposed it, so you don't have to say no daycare. They can always come back at a future date and expand their special use permit to include daycare. And then at that point, you could look at their proposal.
All right.
Um.
Okay. Let's back to the rental. Tom, you okay with that? Doug, how about?
Yes.
Okay. We wanna add that, uh, no commercial rentals as one, as part of this special use permit. Childcare, hall around. And then the other would be temporary structures are limited to a one week period. So if you're having a, a picnic, right? And you wanted to close it, um, if you do a hot, like a rental from Kooch's tents, right? We're saying you can have it up for a week, but what I'm, what we don't wanna do is have multi-months temporary tents that are sitting up there, so it looks like a carnival, so. You guys okay with, I don't know, if weeks long or ten days, maybe two weeks is a little more of a
A week is probably, if you're renting that tent, they're gonna want it up and they want it back so they can rent it again.
Right.
That's how, how I look at it.
So maybe a, an, an eight day or, um, time period on temporary structures.
Let's just do a week.
A week? All right. A one week on temporary structures, not to be, um, I think during the construction period, though, if they wanna protect building materials and things of that nature, you might wanna give some leeway for
There are, there are rules in our code about temporary structures used for co- construction, so we could just leave those.
Okay, leave it out then, okay.
So temporary structures shall be limited to one week periods.
Okay.
This is on their special use permit, not on their site.
Okay. Those are the, before we get into landscaping, those are the two that I thought were just to, or act the neighbors, and plus it goes with the property long term, right? Let's go to landscaping now. Can we have a better look at this? Plan here, just maybe we could talk about it. What we think would be beneficial from a landscaper. And maybe if you can take a marker and mark off what's really there and what's not there. So if you were to so if you were to, um, I'm trying to figure out, how do we provide guidance on what we'd like to see in landscaping if?
You can kinda see, there's a couple of clusters, and there's
So this is, this is the top line we're talking
This is the top line we're looking at right here, I where I came up tonight, I was holding the driveway going back to the house and took a picture toward the north, so we could see just how big the gaps got. There was a lot of dead trees in there. There was always a lot of branches falling, so it needed to be cleaned up a, a lot.
Okay.
Uh, but it just, it did open it right up. In fact, you can see beyond our house, uh, Mrs. Gunderson's house is
No, no.
Our house, very visible, and like I said, since that's happened, we see every car that comes up McKinley. From the minute they cross the creek. So it's, that's the most wide open part of it, is the one that's directly south of the house there. So just a
And there's no road issues there with the, at all, so.
Yeah, just, I, I, my preference would just see a few, maybe evergreens even going. There's one prominent evergreen there that, uh, shields it real nice. But just to kind of fill it back in a little bit with, uh, non-invasive trees, something a little bit cleaners. That's all I'd be looking for. Yeah.
That's, so maybe the way we wanna phrase this, and I'll just throw this out, so we can think about is that um, there needs to be appropriate evergreen screening. At, you, you call this the north?
North boundary.
The north boundary to protect the gen, the views of the adjoining property owners.
Yeah.
And that will be, and it'll be a three-year growing period, then the, uh, it'll be reviewed by the zoning and planning administrator. That for three years to see if they need more trees or trees need to be replaced, something along those lines.
Yeah, it's a little bit further north. It's about a hundred feet probably from the border itself. There's a barn back there at the back corner.
I think the whole road area
That whole road that you've got shown there is probably what we're looking for. If it was representing the way that drawing is, I think that would be ideal. That back portion that backs up to, uh, yeah, that is, that doesn't really, uh, expose any homes back there, and that's Kathy, that's your property, um, I don't know I don't know how far back they took the clearing when you guys did all that clearing.
Are we talking about trees that we cut down, or the scrubby stuff that was in there, and that stuff that was done on that fence that
We're talking about future, what do we want?
Okay, but there was, there was a lot of scrubby stuff, like you said, and there was
No, I understand it. It's been cleaned out just on them, but, but it, it did provide a visual break, right?
Right, but
Yeah, our house was not visible coming up the road. People did not see our house until they were actually up on the burned driveway. And nobody could see it, so between
All we're talking about is, is the reasonable approach, replace the screening that was removed. Whether it was garbage, trees, or not trees, it was still screening, right? So that's, that's what we're trying to figure out from a use permit.
How long is that, uh, property line up on the north side? What's the dimension of that? Is that six hundred? Can you read that cliff on your? I'm looking at the plan. Is it six hundred and forty-eight?
Six hundred and forty-eight might be the total.
Yeah, the total. I'm, I'm looking for the total number because I'm trying to come up with a number that would be used, and then they can figure out where to put the trees, but if you do, use the forty foot, forty one tree for every forty linear feet, at six hundred, um, feet, that's ten for four hundred, and then another five, right, for the six, so fifteen trees. And then if you say fifteen trees, and then have them, space them out where there are gaps in the existing vegetation, that could be a way you form the motion, fifteen evergreen trees.
That six hundred and forty-nine feet represents the entire northern boundary of their property.
Yep.
And ours only goes back through the road, I think about three hundred.
Yeah, I, I think it would be very, uh, self-preserving if you're just concerned about yourself. Um, so I would, I would say the entire
No, I say the entire piece.
Yeah. I mean, because
No, no.
Yeah, if we, I mean, yeah, you live three hundred and forty, but we're not gonna make them do it for the other guys at all.
So how, since Scott, you're
That was where most of the removal, no, no.
But I would say, yeah, the fif- so fifteen trees, and then, um, have their, their lan- landscape architect work with staff to put them in places that have the least screening remaining. Because, yeah, there are trees up there, but again, even the trees that are in the front of the site are these tall, skinny trees that you just see right through, so.
A lot of the underbrush was taken out.
Yeah.
That's fine, we all understand that. What we wanna do is get to a motion where
I always tell developers, don't take any of the vegetation out before you bring the project to us, because you're just, you're, you're just making it harder. Everybody can now see your site, so.
What's, what's so for the north, we're saying fifteen trees?
Fifteen trees along that north elevation, and the, uh, develop, the applicant will work with township staff to place, for the placement of those trees.
Okay, so let's, let's get this formalized then. So you're recording this for the motion?
Kathy's got a comment, Mike.
I've closed public comment for now, but I'll reopen it. So public comment is reopened? I have to be official on that. I'm warning this, okay? Go ahead, Kathy. We're doing a north side first. We're starting at the top, and we're gonna work, work our way around the boundaries. Yeah, no, we're, we're starting at the top and all right, so I'm gonna close public comment again. So fifteen trees along the north.
Evergreen.
Evergreens. And we'll work with staff
On the placement of those.
Placement.
So prior to them getting, so the way it will work is prior to them getting their building permit, they'll come up with a landscape plan that shows fifteen trees located on, on the site. They'll have already gone out there and looked where the existing trees are. I'll go out there when I get their plan in. I'll look at the plan. I'll go, yeah, this looks good.
That's fine. So that's, that covers the north side, and then we've got neighbors on the other side, and if I look at this, where's the, the next area that it was cleaned out? Can you show us?
The west.
West.
The west is the, is frontage for McKinley. It's the people across the street from that.
So.
So they have proposed trees where they cut them totally down, but they've also removed the lower vegetation, probably under the rest of the trees in the front.
That's all empty in there now?
No, those trees are still
Those are still there.
Okay.
But there's no brush.
All right. So, so local remove?
No, towards so the trees that she's showing towards the north property line along the west are still on the site. Everybody that, that, you guys all visited the site and you saw those trees, correct?
So where is it that they're concerned about?
They are proposing to plant the vegetation that they're proposing in the area where the trees have been removed.
These were, all the vegetation was cleaned out of, so, of this lots of light, and even on the side here, they clean the vegetation, so all the lights on the wastewater treatment plant are now
Can't see what you're talking about, so.
Why don't you come up to, you can come up to this area where they can see.
When they cleaned all of this, they opened up all the vegetation, so all the light comes through here.
They didn't clean, where you talked about
On the vegetation under here.
The undergrowth is what she's talking about.
Undergrowth. So even though they have trees, you can now see right through it. I get these for, um, right when you look to come out. Um, the other thing is they cleaned all the vegetation and dead trees along here, so all the lights at the wastewater treatment plant come across.
That's down here.
Up in here, too, well, the road handles, when you go in, and the building goes like this.
I was nowhere that you guys
I don't think anyone got cleared off here. None of this got cleared.
So
No, as I'm seeing all
All we did was take trees out, there were, that, we mowed
Those guys, yeah.
Mowed this for twenty-five years, and mowed it.
Yep.
I quit and got tired of mowing it, so stuff things grew up out in this, used to be a soccer field out here.
Yeah.
Community rec uses for soccer. Scrub, grew up in there. Guys went out and, there's a scrub out of there, and people could see hard. Or a church could be out there. None of this was touched, none of this was touched.
No, none, I don't, I have no idea what altered out here.
Taking out the road commission.
Yes, I understand.
And this was on the fence. And this gentleman was happy that we put some of the stuff out of there, it was hitting your barn, or did you, hit your barn, right? Couple of trees were cut down.
Let me ask this, maybe, I'm trying to, Scott, your thoughts is that I'm, what I wanna just try to get a motion that satisfies both the applicant and the neighbors, right? In regard, regards to screening? So what I'm suggesting is that, um, there, we suggest that the, um, plan has up to forty-five trees potentially to be planted based upon screening requirements in conjunction with approval from the applicant and working with the township.
What, uh, what do they currently have on their, I'm trying to find their landscape plan?
Cause I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, but I understand there's concerns with light pollution, and, you know, things that change in regards to the project, so we're trying to balance needs, right? I'm just going to, I said, oh, I said, I said
I'll, I'll tell you, for Chelsea Springs, they planted four hundred and sixty-nine trees. So forty-five trees to, in the scope of your work is nothing. Trust me. It will be like, oh, I dropped a penny on the side of the road, compared to how much it's gonna cost for you to build your structure. Yeah, forty-five trees is very, is very little. If you were to replace the trees that you already removed, if those were removed as part of this project, it would have been much greater than forty-five trees. So, based on the, it, it's all based on the diameter of the tree that was removed, um, so. I mean, I just wanna know how many trees you're currently proposing, so that I, so that I know that forty-five trees will be enough, because we've already added fifteen trees along the north property line, so I'm trying to find your landscape plan. I think Kathy's looking at it right now.
Thirteen street trees.
How many?
Thirteen.
Oh, and straight along the street?
Yep, those are the ones that are, that they're showing up there between, in the area where they cut down the trees already. And then they have the trees around the parking area. Forty th- forty-three trees along the parking area. And that's probably it, right? Yeah. So, it, do you want them to plant forty-five additional trees on top of those?
Maybe we take the
Fifty-six trees that they're already proposing.
Trees that are around the parking lot, and you moved them more to the backside, right, for screening? It's another option, right?
You could do that.
Backside. I, I, I think, Laurie, to your point, the building itself is going to create a barrier between you and the, the lighting back there. Um, yeah, I, I remember when there was no lighting back there, and it was great, and when it all started popping in, none of us ever knew it, because it was all the city doing it, not the township. So parking lot trees around their perimeter is also gonna help a lot. Because right now, that's all open field, and uh, the only thing that we have is, for a barrier, was just along the edges of the property.
No, what I'm suggesting is that we give the flexibility to the, those trees that are around the parking lot. If, if we wanna put them on the borderlines of the edge of the property, we give them the flexibility to place them there versus around the parking lot.
I think that would accomplish one thing, but what they wanted to do with their parking area by putting the trees around them, I don't know what that
Well, and those, those trees are all canopy trees, but, you know, one of them, some pine trees.
We would be happy to with those trees, back to the property line, as opposed to around the park. I would, I would just be keep the interior ones that are in the landscaping on but the ones that are along the edge, we'd like those
I, I would think your parish, parishioners, your, your congregants would like shade trees by the parking lot, especially Sunday mornings when it's eighty degrees outside. They may wanna park in the shade. But, um,
canopy trees out there.
That when you start planting these nice deciduous trees so close together, they don't grow nice and develop the canopy that you would like them to have, so even if we took half of them
So even if we took half of them to the property.
I, I think we still need evergreens just from a blockage perspective. Yeah, I don't have.
I don't.
I don't have a issue with that.
I don't think it's of.
Uh, it's not.
To ask for forty-five additional trees either. This is a ten acre lot.
Okay.
They've got large areas of, of land where they can plant screening. If you believe that screening is needed to preserve the character of the community, the uh, impact to the adjacent neighbors of those types of things, so.
Turn across the side property line there, why don't we put?
You can also say that they need to bring a landscape plan back to a planning commission for approval. You can approve the project with the condition that a landscape plan be brought back to the planning commission for approval prior to issuance of a building.
I like that idea. Cause we're, we're looking at it, we're not seeing.
You guys are coming up with like, yeah, random things.
Right. No, I think that's a good idea, Scott.
That will give the developer the ability to go out and get their funding. Their landscape architect to go out to the site and actually review where all the existing trees are and then create a landscape plan that preserves the um, views or screens the project from future homes.
Sounds reasonable. I like that idea. Is everyone else okay with that?
So is that gonna um, cover both the north screening and the east screening or are we just talking about?
No, basically what we're saying is that they need to come back with a landscaping plan.
Right.
That addresses all of those addresses.
All of north and east side and stuff.
Okay.
Sure too. Cause if their landscape plan is not approved until you guys approve it.
Right.
Let's say it, when you have the, it won't be a public hearing. Um, you'll just be reviewing it administratively for approval, but let's say at that meeting, somebody from the south that goes to the dog park all the time comes and they don't wanna see the church and they start complaining that they can see now through. You might want additional screening there too.
Alright.
So it doesn't specifically stop any you from requiring anything in the future. What they should do when they're proposing the landscape plan is visit the site. State where the actual existing trees are on the landscape plan. Show proposed trees on the landscape plan and explain why they put those trees in that location. So that when you guys review it again, there's reasoning behind why you're, why they put the trees there, why they are not putting more trees somewhere else on the property and then you'll make a determination because you'll have gone out in the field and saw where they're proposing to plant these trees and gone, no, I think they should plant like five more over here. No, I should, I think they should plant a few more over here, right? Like every time we get one of these plans, you guys go out in the field and you walk the site and you're like, nah, yeah, I think it meets these requirements. So this will just be the reason that you know.
I know where it's at.
Alright, so I liked that idea. Is everyone else good with that? Alright, so let's draft that up as um, as a condition. The condition of the special use is approval of a landscape plan.
Trying to approve the special use permit with the condition of approval that a landscape plan be reviewed and approved by the planning commission prior to issuance of the building.
Alright. Alright, so let's work on our motion then for the special use permit. Anything else that we wanna?
One, one other minor detail. It says that there is an existing fence there. I don't think we've got any requirements for a fence. The fence is a hazard. I wouldn't be opposed to seeing that removed as part of landscaping plan because it's just wire and metal posts. It, it's, it's an old farm fence, uh, some barbed wire still, but that big square and most of it's not there anymore. There's very few sections that even.
So that, so they, that, that'll be part of their cleanup then, is when they come back and dress it.
I just wanted to bring that one up cause it's.
Okay.
But we, we have no fencing requirements. From a zoning standpoint that having that on there that there's an existing fence would meet something. Cause that, that's not really a fence at all.
That's a question. We don't require uh, this type of use to have a fence.
That's what I'm asking. I know we've talked about fencing in the past on other properties, other uses.
So there's no uh, requirements in our zoning.
So nothing happens to the fence. It's not gonna affect the, the requirements actually. Just something that probably should get cleaned up.
Alright, so as far as a motion, if I look at page seventeen. Scott, make sure we're all on the same page, right? No, that's why I got a lot of paper floating around here too, so.
I got it.
North side?
Yeah, I think. I looked through the revised one. Yeah, the revised one only had the site.
Additional that you needed this time because that's a site.
Right, this is the stuff she used, we're talking about.
The example approval motion without item one.
Yep.
Property line.
And then uh.
Actually not on the property line. It sits in the left side of it quite a bit.
Yep, and then we wanna add um.
Wanted to add no commercial rental of space.
Correct.
Um, temporary structures shall be limited to one we see in the periods.
Yep.
And a landscape.
Does anybody go through there?
Will be uh, revised and approved by the planning commission prior to issuance of a.
Before you could go through there, cause this was so.
Of a building permit as discussed.
It's really not a hazard, but it's going down through there.
So.
No.
Who wants to make the motion based upon what we just heard?
So move.
Motion by Doug. We have a motion by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close. No, motion passes.
Tom.
Tom. I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to get your notes together. Now. Page seventeen. Now we wanna talk about. Like, or the site review. Are you ready? Yep, are you ready for the site plan review? Okay. Alright, so the site plan review standards. All required information, standards for review, um. All required information might provide it, it says um. That is correct. The proposed development conforms to all regulations in the zoning district in which it is located. Based upon those, the staff report and your information has seen, I believe that complies with zoning district. Anyone disagree? No? Okay. The applicant may legally apply for site plan review. You are the legal owner, correct? Okay. Vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the site and in relation to streets and sidewalks serving sites shall be safe and convenient. So. We've talked about the road. We know that the fire department's got its input and Washtenaw County Commission will have to, Road Commission will have to sign off. I think from a planning commission perspective, those things are, some of beyond our control, but there's other agencies that cover it, so I think that condition's been met.
That's why we have the suggested condition of approval that all required federal, state, local reviews and approval will be required for this project prior to issuance. Including but not permitting to Washtenaw County Road Commission, Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department, Township Engineering Consultant, Chelsea Area Fire Authority and Chelsea Area Construction.
And what denomination are you? You're non-denominational, so you couldn't ask the bishop to approve it too? Okay. Alright.
And then uh, there is the suggested condition that I added to your uh memo, that if revisions for the parking area and drive aisles are required to the fire district.
Point three, right? Yeah, we'll get to that. I'm gonna run through the site one. Uh, the proposed site will be harmonious with and not harmful, injurious, or objectable to existing and future uses in the immediate area. Um, I don't think, I didn't, haven't heard anything that would, I find object. Yep. Point five, I'm, I'm comfortable with. Anyone else comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Natural resources will be observed to a maximum feasible extent. Well, we've had a lot of talk about brush removal and the other things, but their factor kinda come back to us with the landscaping plan. I think we're, point number six is the condition that's been met.
What does sparkly vegetated mean?
Pardon?
Sparkly vegetation.
The proposed development respects natural topography to the maximum feasible extent and minimizes the amount of cutting and filling required. I'm not sure about the cutting, but there's no filling on the site to speak of. I think we're okay with moving forward with point number seven in regards to site plan review meeting standards. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Eight, organic wet or other soils which are not suitable for development will be undisturbed or would be modified in an acceptable manner. They've got their health department permit and it sounds like EGLE um, has been all over the banks of the river down there, so I don't see any reason where point number eight would give us any reason for doubt. So I'm, I'm comfortable. Is everyone else comfortable? Okay. The proposed development properly respects floodways and floodplains on or in the vicinity of the subject property. Um. I see no issue with that. Everyone else good with that? Phases of development are in logical sequence so that any phase will not depend on subsequent phases for adequate access, public utility service drainage or erosion or erosion default. I don't think we can answer that um, at this point, but I'm not sure how relevant it, it is for us this time. I, I think we'll just ignore that. We're gonna ignore that one. Alright, okay. Alright, now, so those were the preliminary site plan reviews. And since this is combined, we have to go through the final site plan review standards. The final site plan conforms to the preliminary site plan as approved by the township planning commission. Cause the pros and cons for combined preliminary and final site plan, these documents are the same, therefore the standard is met. Uh, the plan meets all applicable standards, section thirty dot twenty-one. Um, this is, that does not apply, given this recreation conservation district, which no longer exists, right Scott?
No, it's still exist.
That's how we get rid of the, the recreation, or I'm sorry, we got rid of the recreation district, right?
No.
Well, we'll talk about that offline. I don't want that. Plan meets, no, I know there's one district we just removed. I maybe I'm stuck. The plan meets the specification of the town for fire and police protection, water supply, sewers, garden, other public facilities. I see, I see no issues here. Uh, proposed development will not cause soil erosion or sediment problems. This is all caca, we'll have to approve it, so that's part of construction, they'll earn their building permit. The drainage plan for the proposed development is adequate to handle anticipated stormwater runoff and will not cause undue runoff onto neighboring property or overloading of of water courses in the area. I know there's a lot of work that went into the Letts Creek and I didn't see anything in the reports that said that this is an issue, so I think we've passed that. The proposed, proposed development is coordinated with improvements serving the subject property and with the other developments in the general vicinity. It's located in uh, near North Creek School, proposed church building, park area are set back off the street and screened from views. McKinley Road by existing and proposed landscaping. Outside lighting will not adversely affect adjacent or neighboring properties or traffic on adjacent streets. I don't think there's anything on the lights, Scott, that you saw that was gonna be an issue, correct?
Uh, that will use the light temperature of three thousand Kelvin. Uh, the lights will be required to be turned off.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Just all the things that are in.
Yeah, all the stuff that's in here, right? Yeah, there was nothing else that came up though tonight that. Okay. Everyone okay with that? Point number seven. Outdoor storage of garbage and refuse is contained, screened from view and located so as not to be a nuisance to the subject property owners or neighboring property. Uh, will not be a nuisance. Just one question, the, the dumpster height and the fence height, I think I read that your fencing would be as tall as the dumpsters themselves? Just for clarity's sake. The reason I bring it up, I don't, um, we've got the heating and metal company down the road here. What's the name of that company? Steel. If you look at their dumpsters, their dumpster is here. Or their, here and their fences here, so you can. It's not, it's not um, kosher. And so one of the things that I would like to see is um, is the condition is that the heights of the fencing blocks views of the dumpsters entirely, right? There, nothing, and as you're, as you've got it in your plan, does that the way it looks right now? Yep. Yep, right. Okay. Okay. Okay, no, that's why I just.
Is that the, the, where the dumpsters are located or the dumpsters could be located? Has that got a gate on it that, that, where the trucks have to open it to get to it?
You'd be putting raccoon traps in there too?
There's our raccoon traps.
Yeah. Alright, so I think point eight, they've addressed that. Uh, grading or filling uh, will not destroy the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding areas, not the adversely affect the adjacent or neighboring properties. I don't, from what I've read and seen, or read I should say, is it doesn't seem like there's gonna be any hard any grading, so it's, I think we're okay on point number nine. Parking lot will not adversely affect the flow of traffic within the site to or from the adjacent streets. Well, this is um, still subject to WCRC permissions and approval, so I think point ten, we can move on. Plan meets the standards of other governments where applicable and that approval of these agencies has been obtained or is assured. So at this point, it's neither of those is completed, so we'll, that'll be part of the condition. Completed, so we'll, that'll be part of the conditions for the final site plan. Plan provides for properties, for the property extension of public, existing public streets, serving the site where applicable. In this case, it's not applicable. Okay. Got based upon our other requirements that we put in the special use permit. Do we need to repeat any of those for the site one? The landscaping plan.
All the rest. So if you go to page four of the memo that I created.
Yep, the new one, yep.
New memo.
Yes.
This, the memo that I'm talking about addresses the parking.
Yep.
Um the eighteen and it also addresses the capa review because those two things came in after.
Right. Your report.
So in there, um I do, I did add a, we remove the parking requirement.
Yep.
Under the conditions of approval because as we talked before, their parking meets the two square foot requirement. And then I added a a suggested condition.
Number three?
Number three.
Yep.
That's so that they can do the uh proposed change to the, if the, if they need a proposed change.
Right.
Without having to go back through a administrative site plan review process, it would just be approved. Uh as part of the um zoning permit, so that I don't have to.
No, that's fine.
Do all of the extra.
They wanna have objections to that on point number three? No, okay. Then we want to add a fourth point in here.
Fourth one would be a revised landscape plan will be reviewed and approved by the planning commission prior to issuance of a building.
And the temporary structures, we don't need to.
We don't, those two. Uh special use permit.
Alright.
And don't need to stick with site.
Okay. And then where do we talk about the timing for?
Oh, I I didn't add that in there, but yeah, we should probably add, we didn't add it.
Can we put it in here?
Yeah, we can put it in here um that the. Uh to to allow um what is?
Up to one year?
I gotta read it. Um to allow um to extend the expiration of approval from a hundred and eighty days. To three hundred and sixty-four days.
Okay.
The expiration of approval. From a hundred and eighty days to three hundred and sixty-five days to secure a building.
As have, they had a chance to see this, the text of this about the hours and all that? The lighting in it? You seen it?
That's right.
Okay. Well, I'm, do you want me to reread this or we just take it?
Um but you didn't read the last one, but you can, I mean, most of the time you would read the.
Yeah.
Sample approval motion and then uh just say the the five conditions as in the report and as discussed.
So we got. I guess I'll read it. The proposed wall lights, this is are the conditions.
So do you wanna read the?
Yeah, I'm looking.
I searched three of them. I can read it.
No, I'm just, I'm looking, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't see it, Scott.
Little handout he just gave us this evening.
Yeah, no, I got it.
On the third page.
On the third page at the bottom, it says like, if I'm using that full approval motion.
Oh, there, I'm sorry. Looking at reports all day, so. Alright, planning commission motions to approve the combined plumbing and final site plans CSPA twenty-five dash two oh seven to allow. Improvements to the property at seven one nine McKinley Street for the future church because as discussed and presented at tonight's planning commission meeting. And as presented in the planning commission staff report for the project, the following conditions will meet the standards of preliminary site plan review of section thirty dot seven dot six. That's C one dot ten and final site plan review of section thirty dot seven eight, see sections one to twelve. Project includes amount of limited construction of a new ten thousand square foot building to be used for the primary church services. And the existing eighteen hundred and seventy-five square foot home on the site will be converted to office space to support the churches. Improvements will also include parking spaces for a hundred and four vehicles, a four hundred eighty square foot storage garage, a hundred and fifty square foot. Garbage enclosure, new lighting and new landscaping. The approved improvements as shown on the ten twenty-five project. The conditions of approval. Those wall lights shall be fully shielded, all lights shall utilize light temperature three thousand Kelvin or lower. Except where used for security purposes, outdoor lighting fixtures existing or or here thereafter installed and maintained shall be turned off. Between eleven PM and sunrise, except when used for. Period, I'm taking except for commercial industrial uses out. It creates an anomaly, right? Well, ending it between eleven PM and sunrise period. All required federal, state and local reviews and approvals will be required for this project. Prior to issuance of a building permit, including but not limited to Washington County Road Commission, Washington County Environmental Health Department. Township Engineering Consultant, Chelsea Area Fire Authority, Chelsea Area Construction Authority. And do we want, and Sylvan Township Planning Commission in regards to the landscaping plan. You okay with that, Scott?
I, what, I didn't, where were, did, are you to item four? Is that what?
Item two, I put it out. It's and Sylvan Township Planning Commission, so the two landscaping plan approval.
Sure.
That okay, put it in two? If revisions to the parking area or drive aisles are required to meet fire district, engineering or other applicable local, state or federal review requirements. The zoning administrator shall review the proposed modifications. The zoning administrator determines that the revisions are minimal, they may be approved administratively as part of the zoning. Permit approval. Then we, the the last one we have to add in, we talked about the landscaping, I think that was the only one we had to.
You already added it into the.
So.
Uh item two.
Yep, so I think we got it all.
And then the extension of.
Oh.
The extension.
And the applicant has three hundred and sixty-four days.
Pull a building permit.
To pull. Wouldn't call it the building permit. It's three hundred and sixty-four days to acquire a proper, to acquire the building permit.
That's fine.
Anything else?
Or, condition one, we're striking everything after the word sunrise? Because that's all pertains to businesses.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
The motion?
That's the motion. Motion by Chris, seconded by Leo. All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Oppose, motion passes. Okay.
It was easy.
What's that?
That was easy.
Alright, next on the agenda. So we're gonna close new business, we're gonna move on to comments, concerns of the planning commission members.
Are we done?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Manny, you wanna talk about that? Leo?
Couple things, I just want us to think about revisiting um our. Online training through MTA, those modules.
In which way, has anyone done it?
Uh just several months ago and.
No, I remember you said it out.
Yeah, so um just, let's keep that on our mind maybe with winter coming now. So, but I'd also like us to think about, I'll I'll talk to the board about this too, but. The idea of um. Adding some kind of wetland protection for smaller wetlands, just for review. Some, you know, that fall under Eagles radar. Some sort of standards of review for those.
Yeah, how much of that do we really have in the township though?
I think there's a number of smaller, especially like vernal pools and things that are are uh. Have unique fauna in them that you don't find in other wetlands. That these particular animals are dependent upon, so um. I think it's worth protecting them where practicals, so we're not paving over them or filling them indiscriminately.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think where we in township, you know, lots of giving all of our state land, right?
Well, it would have to be outside of our state land, yeah, cuz. Yeah.
The primary along creeks, I guess.
Well, creeks, uh woodlands, sun peoples, a lot of these wetlands can be in in woodlands or in farm fields. Uh field edges. So. Just some, yeah, to think about. So.
I, I don't have anything else. Alright, so I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, motion by town. By Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed.
I got Ann Bushroad, I think he's gonna be favored to dry that whole mess up.
What's that?
Put a pond in there, I think he's gonna dry that whole mess up.
Is he?
I think, I don't think there's a good spring there.
Hmm, well.
Cause they got that culvert going across to where that other pond, those two ponds were.
Bush Road kinda went through that wetland, it looks like, from the aerial photo.
Can't stop progress.
But. Might be a degraded wetland anyway, I don't know.
I don't, I think he's gonna dry it up. Putting into, I don't think there's a good spring there. He's always in the spring of the year and stuff, growing water, you know, the water there eventually it dried up.
Yes.
The old guy that owned the whole thing used to mow around it. When it, you know, in the summer.
Well, that was a lot to go through tonight.